All right, good evening, everybody. We will call to order this special meeting of May 3. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sanchez Palacios.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Halter.
Here.
Councilmember Friedman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schrader.
Here.
And Mayor Rubicalva.
Here.
And now, Councilmember Brown will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Right hand over your chest.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America.
All right, thank you for that, and we will continue with City Council Communications. Any Council Communications? Councilmember Brown?
I just wanted to let everybody know that on the 19th, we're going to have another GPAC meeting in order to continue the discussion about the land use designations.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Brown. Any others? All right, if there are no others, then we will continue with City Manager Communications.
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's see. Next item is Public Communications. As this is a special meeting, public communications are limited only to agenda items appearing on the special meeting agenda. Mr. City Clerk, are there any members of the public that are attending the meeting that wish to speak during public comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have two public speakers, and we did receive an emails, and the supplemental packet has been posted.
Wonderful, thank you.
Our first speaker tonight is Liz Campos.
I thank you for keeping that in mind.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Campos.
Good night.
Okay, our next speaker is Trevor Gottsman, and Trevor, we're going to promote you to a panelist now, and you should be able to unmute yourself.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for tolerating me on the backside. Budget Finance Committee, I didn't hear what Liz had to say, but I just want us to, I have to keep reminding us, it's, you know, foraging around for a living is, and looking at the cracks, there's all kinds of interesting and worthy things, and the cracks produce tremendous amount of things, but we need to think, keep things very tight and in order. And it's like that budget, you budget, then you finance, then you audit, and that triplicate, that check and balance, and that, you know, checking and verifying, it comes back to our community, where I keep saying, we, the more we incorporate the community in the little, in the check, in the auditing essentially, but ideally in the financing and the budgeting processes as well, we can all use our needs. You know, I, I am offering my services to San Barbara City College, and I had to get fingerprinting done today, and it's a wonderful place. You go into City College, and they check you, they look at you, and then it's respect, because people don't really know you, but they verified you, they've checked you, and everybody is wonderfully behaved, and everything's in wonderful order, and from the outside, it's so pleasant, and everybody's pleasant. It's like being the doorman at Starbucks, where Chief David Ndiaye and I met this morning, which was a wonderful thing, and the more we could incorporate the community in this process, and it really comes to the budgeting, and how we finance, and what we finance, and how we implement that, and let us help you audit, and so that we really all know what's going on, and how we, and where we can be useful to each other. So I really just want to keep encouraging us to do that, and incorporate it at every level within our community. So, thank you very much, I won't say any more than that, but the tight tolerances can be maintained if we all know, and we're running a tight ship, but let us loosen and use the least, as I said, within the cracks, let us walk the streets, do it, and report back, and, and direct us, as us ask Chief Ndiaye, just let us, use us as we are able to offer you our services, and we take the responsibility within each, and teach each of us to take responsibility for our actions, and, and keep the intent pure. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gottsman. And now, we will continue with our formal item, which is 13-8, Transmittal of Fiscal Year 2022 to 2023 Proposed Operating and Capital Improvement Budget. And for that, we have our Finance and Technology Director, Mr. Michael Kuhn. Welcome.
You're welcome. I believe Mr. McIntyre is going to get us kicked off tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Michael, and thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. I am very proud tonight to present to you my fourth budget for the city of Ventura. This is the first budget in my four years with the city where we put, we assembled the budget through a process of addition rather than subtraction. You know, COVID has been very hard on this organization, and we've done a lot of elimination, a lot of constricting of the certain services, and this is the first year in, in a spell where we've been able to enhance services. If you hear nothing else tonight, the budget's balanced. It's balanced across all funds, and that's a very critical piece of, of information, because having a balanced budget is required under our charter. The second issue is the balance, the budget is, as, as Liz Campos commented, is it's a nearly $400 million budget, 397.2 million, to be exact. The general fund of the budget is 142 million, with the Measure O Fund being about 19.5. The reason I point those two out is that's where the council has, has the most discretion on, on how to spend the monies. And the other, but the other funds are somewhat self-restrictive with regards to where you can spend those kinds of funds. This is the first year also where we've been able to not just add positions, but we've actually have unfrozen, using that infamous term from our past, unfrozen a number of positions, and have finally, through this year's process, eliminated the balance of the frozen positions. You will see, though, that we have added to both public safety on the police and fire side, we've enhanced the City Manager's office, particularly the City Clerk's office, we even enhanced the finance and technology side of the House. We, we are making the additions this year, again, for the first time. I do want to point out something for the council's information, that while this budget doesn't reflect it, we actually now have a, we've broken up finance and technology as of April 30th, as in the other day. We now have a self-standing finance department and a self-standing information technology department. Michael Kuhn's title was Director of Finance and Technology, his new title is Chief Financial Officer, and we have a new Chief Technology Officer, and I'm proud to say that Mitchell Cameron from the city's organization has been promoted to Chief Technology Officer, and it was a competitive process where 66 employees had applied to a nationwide recruitment, and I'm very proud to say that Mitchell Cameron stepped up and really proved to be the right, the right talent for this organization right now. He's got, his hands will be quite full for a while. Moving on, if I can, just a couple more comments to make is, as I said earlier, we, we've actually are starting to add back staff so that we can get our, our staffing levels to a level, to a point where we're able to deliver services more efficiently and more appropriately to the community. And some historic decisions that were made, I think, are important to call out for the council. One of the things that you'll see in this year's budget is a continuation of Red Flex. We are bringing you back that contract in June, it's scheduled to come back to you. And we, because the council asked us to bring it back, and by no means are we predetermining whether or not the council will approve it, but this, this budget does reflect the revenues from Red Flex. This budget also reflects decisions made in the past whereby the council started to unwind itself with the Ventura Visitors Bureau, and being able to have them set their own, define their own resources through their own levies, and so they could raise their own monies independent of the city, and so that dependence on the city is lessened right now. The other item here is, I mean, very proud of Michael and his team, where they refinanced about, about $25 million of our debt, to the tune of a savings of about a little over $400,000 a year in debt payments, which is helpful as well. Another thing that was very important to this council was getting the casino, the Players Casino Club, the Players Casino reopened as quickly as possible. They are open and operating, as you know, down at the Derby Club, down at the fairgrounds, and that is, that's about a $1.3 million net win back to our, our budget again. As you know, we had lost those revenues during COVID. And finally, the long, the long-planned item around cannabis, and bringing cannabis sales and looking at a tax revenue from cannabis, the number is low in this year's budget, only because we don't expect the retail outlets to open until closer to spring, so the latter part of our fiscal year. But all those are decisions that the council has made historically to really help us balance this budget more readily. And with that, I'm going to, actually, let me, let me offer some thanks to a couple of people who are critical in getting this budget put together. Certainly, Michael has become quite the adept expert at our budget, I'm very proud of the work he has done. Assistant City Manager Akbar Ali Khan has been a key player on our budget team. In front of you there is Greg Morley, who I think technically today is the Assistant Chief Financial Officer, almost.
We were able to announce it publicly today, it will become official on May 13.
Okay, so Greg is the, is the new Assistant Chief Financial Officer. Daryl Brumley is the interim Financial Services Manager, who has been instrumental in putting this, this budget together. And then we have Jennifer Alarcon, who is our Senior Financial Analyst, who is just a whizbanging with, with the numbers and whatnot. I'm very proud of, of the work she has done. And finally, Pete Graves out of our graphics shop. This thing doesn't magically happen. It takes a lot of effort to create the document itself, so I want to give a, a shout out to Pete. And with that now, Michael, your show. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Like I said, it really has been a long process, and you know, over six months of work has gone into it from, from the staff perspective, also from the City Council perspective. A huge collaborative effort, obviously, there's, you know, the people that Alex named, and also many other people throughout every department in the organization, who really participated over the last six months to get us where we are tonight. So that being said, I'm going to run us, run us through the agenda for tonight. So I'm going to cover, I'm the first part, the budget process overview, look at the City Council goals and principles, do a brief touch base, just a refresher on what happened in Budget Workshop Number One, look at the over wide city, overall city budget, look at the position counts and changes, and look at the general fund, and then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Morley, who's going to be covering Measure O, water and wastewater, and an update on the one-time investment plan. So that being said, here is a calendar of where we have been and where we're at. So as many, well, obviously, everyone in the City Council knows, because you participated in the process this year, there were three goal-setting sessions, instead of the typical just one Saturday session, which is a change in the process. So the goal-setting kicked off in November, just before staff's kickoff. You know, the City Council had their kickoff for the goal-setting session on the 15th, and the next day, staff had our kickoff for the budget meeting. And then, we've had Budget Workshop Number One, you, Public Works transmitted the proposed CIP, and then the CIP was adopted. As was mentioned previously, we met with FAB, the FAB meeting happened on April 13th, and then last week, the budget was transmitted via the agenda, and then we're here tonight. Then after tonight, we have the user fees coming up for May, the May 9th agenda, and then we have a Budget Workshop for May 23rd, and then we're scheduled for a public hearing and adoption on June 13th. Just a high-level overview, like sort of where, where we've been and where we're going. Now, just want to touch base and briefly review what was discussed at Budget Workshop Number One. So this is just a high-level summary we have before you, that's really looking at the general fund, at the resources and expenditures. So you see, the, the first column of numbers are the projections for the current year. So at the time, we, we projected that resources and revenues would be about $15 million over the expenditures. We're still anticipating it will come in very close to that. As a key reminder, if you, if you go up from the bottom line one to the second to last row, you'll see an $8.6 million, this is one-time money. A lot of, a lot of that being the second ARPA tranche that's coming from the federal government in a matter of weeks. So really, when you kind of discount the one-time money, there's, there's a projected to be operational surplus of about $6.4 million for the current fiscal year. I mean, except not a lot of changes since Budget Workshop Number One. And then we get into the outlook that we presented, you know, at the time, we thought we'd have about $3.5 million more than what was needed to provide the same level of services next year as the current fiscal year. Mr. McIntyre discussed earlier a list of items that have been added. That is primarily, primarily what drove that projected additional funding. As, you know, as, you know, some of you were not on the City Council at the time, but I'm sure you followed the budget process very closely two years ago. When we're balancing the budget after COVID, there's various different lists, and some of the lists are, were, you know, things that we could do that won't have an impact now, but will have an impact in the future. And almost everything that Mr. McIntyre read off came from that list. I mean, things that, you know, City Council said, directed staff to start doing two years ago, that are starting, starting to pay dividends in the financial, in our financial statements. And then really, that's like I said, just the high-level overview of Budget Workshop Number One, just getting us teed up for overview of the, of City Council, of its goals and the budget. So, as you're all familiar with the new process for setting the goals, we also came, our City Council also came out with four focus areas for the goals: broadband, fiscal stability, fiscal policies, and housing policies. And then also, there was a list of various projects that City Council wanted staff to maintain a focus on. So these have been included in the budget, were used in the budget by staff, as we're looking at the various different decisions to prioritize how to spend the resources that are included in the budget. In addition to the City Council goals, we have the City Council budget principles. So the 12 budget principles have remained for the last four budget cycles. Once again, staff uses these when we're working at balancing the budget, making the decisions on the, on the last additions, looking at what, what does staff feel, what does City Manager feel best meets, except the goals and the principles. Also, as a reminder, there's four principles for Measure O that were established. This would be their third budget cycle that they're being used, just really focusing, giving staff some additional focus on how to spend those Measure O dollars. And like I said, that was kind of what went into, to making the budget. When it went into baking it, and basically what came out was a $397.2 million budget. I was just saying, you know, a large increase over the prior year. As many of you can remember, we'll be going through at a high level the reasons for the increase. The general fund, as was mentioned, has a budget of $142 million. The capital funds have a budget of $86.4 million. Special revenue funds, these are things like Measure O, the transportation fund, and various other small funds make up about $43 million. And then, as has been discussed, a lot, the internal service funds, or the ISFs, they make up about $40 million, and then we have a water wastewater as well. And so, looking at this next slide, we're going to talk a little bit about the resources and where they come from. So, as you can see, the biggest revenue source or resource, resource for the city is taxes. You know, we have seen really strong growth in taxes over the last year, year and a half. We're anticipating that, that will continue for the remainder of the calendar year, but we may start to see some things slow down early next calendar year. And then looking at charges for service, charges for service, the biggest item Charges for service, the biggest item there are the revenues generated for water and wastewater. But then, the next category after that would probably be our fees that are collected from Parks and Recreation for the various programs and activities that they offer. Prior-year resources. So prior-year resources is basically fund balance that has been saved over time for primarily capital projects or for one-time projects. So as another key point, in the budget this year, you'll see there's a big emphasis, a lot of money being moved towards capital projects. And those are being paid for primarily through fund balance. So these will be things like Ventura Water Pure, the Olivas Park Drive Extension, state water interconnect projects like this. They're really driving large increases in CIP spending. And then, we'll go into a little bit more detail on some of the other funds on the specific revenue categories. Citywide expenditures are, like I said, once again, to balance budget. The expenditures match the resources. So in a change from years past, the biggest expense for the city next year is not going to be personnel. It's going to be CIP. Once again, as I mentioned on the previous slide, you know, these are going to be things like Ventura Water Pure, Olivas Park Drive Extension and whatnot. And so there'll be just under $129 million of capital outlay and CIP are included in the budget for next fiscal year. Like I said, a lot of design work, a lot of work progressing moving forward. Personnel services will be closely following that category as the second biggest category at just about $129 million. Supplies and services is remaining fairly consistent with what we've seen in prior years. Small increase will be about $89 million. Internal services, $24 million. There will be some increases here. In the, one of the primary ones, there's two of the primary ones are in the fleet fund. We did increase revenues. We increased the funding to the fleet fund to make sure that the fire apparatus schedule, the 20-year replacement schedule is adequately funded. It needed about $250,000. That was added. On the facilities side of the house, I'm going to go a little bit more detail here because we won't have any slides later on. But over the last year and a half, Public Works has really dived, done a deep dive on what our facilities need citywide. What is the deferred maintenance? And what we need to do to adequately maintain all the great facilities we have. And so in doing so, they discovered that the facilities fund needs an additional $1.8 million every year to meet all of the needs that are outstanding in the city. Now with that, about approximately $1.4 million of that would be general fund contribution, so the vast majority. And so that was something that was discussed, looked at in this budget process. Not all of that need was funded. But as we get to the general fund balancing sheet later on, you will see that there was $500,000 added from the general fund to take the first step of meeting the needs to adequately fund all of our facilities. And then transfers, once again, these are just various monies moving around between the different funds. In the general fund, in the governmental funds, we have money going towards debt service. We have money being paid for services rendered. So all the other funds receive services administrative overhead from the general fund. And so they pay the general fund back via transfers. In the water and wastewater, debt service is treated a little bit differently. So it's not in transfer line items, but you'll see it's in that non-operating and debt service line item. And then we have our various reserves and contingencies. I'm now looking at it a little bit more by department. There's also some shifts in the proposed budget at some of the departments you'll see at the top of the list. And once again, this is related to large CIP projects. So Ventura Water Pure, once again, for projects like, I said Ventura Water Pure, I meant Ventura Water, their department. Once again, because of projects like Ventura Water Pure, they're at the top of the list for the largest spending by department for next year. Public Works is second. Once again, a lot of capital projects going on there. And then followed by the Police Department, Parks and Rec, Fire. Once again, as Mr. McIntyre pointed out, Finance and Technology are combined in the proposed budget. They will be separated in the adopted budget. But one of the nice things about technology is you can see the budget there because it is its own separate fund in the budget book. But like I said, that separation will be shown in the adopted budget. Non-departmental is basically a catch-all. And it does have a large increase compared to prior years. This is predominantly for various one-time items. For example, in the investment plan, there's a lot of money from the investment plan included in the budget. And those are being transferred from the general fund to other funds. So in the general fund, they're showing up as an expense in non-departmental. Also, there's various different reserves the city council has authorized for labor negotiations that are included in that non-departmental as well. And then from there, we have Human Resource, Community Development, City Manager, City Attorney, and the city council budget. And then, moving to the next slide, we're going to do a high-level overview of the employee history for the city. So as you can see, we have four years of history and then the proposed budget for next year. The proposed full-time position or full-time benefited positions for next year is 693.75, which is a net increase of 15 positions from the prior year. And then there's roughly a net increase of one extra-help FTE over the prior year. Remember, these extra-help FTEs prior to last year were not reported. But basically, we look at all the hours that we budget and convert that into, you know, divide it by 2,080 hours to see what the equivalent of a full-time employee is. So next year, there is included just under 79, basically, equivalent part-time, full-time positions in the budget. And then I'm going to review the changes in the budget from last year's adopted budget to how we get to the final number, the proposed budget. So if you look, there are four different changes that occurred mid-year that affect the position account. One of those changes was to delete a secretary position in community development. Another change was recently, within the last couple of months, city council approved the mid-year addition of two firefighter paramedic positions. Also, city council recently approved the addition of an HR analyst. And then early in the year, an additional position was also approved in Ventura Water for a senior accounting assistant. So mid-year, basically in the current fiscal year, there was a net of three positions added throughout the year that we kind of start off as an adjustment when looking at the budget numbers for next year. And then also, looking at the frozen positions, as Mr. McIntyre also mentioned, these are being addressed in the proposed budget. Prior, or previously to the budget process, three positions or three different position classes had been unfrozen for a total of five positions. We had three equipment mechanics that were unfrozen, a civil engineer, and a utility service lead worker. Included in the proposed budget to unfreeze is the deputy city clerk position, one police corporal, and a senior engineering technician. Now, I do want to point out that the senior engineering technician is being funded by various different offsets in Public Works to offset the costs of that. They've reduced some extra help in their budget to bring that full-time position back. And then also, the budget does propose to eliminate six of the frozen positions, or six of the nine positions that are currently frozen. That would be one code enforcement officer, one police corporal, and four police officer positions. And then looking at some of the new position requests, there's a classification here that's called new position requests with offsets. And so, you know, I highlighted the senior engineering technician on the previous slide because that was a frozen position, but similar thing here. It was funded through various different offsets, not new revenues. So one of these is a new assistant city attorney that would be funded by reducing the budget amount for outside legal counsel. Another one is the addition of a senior financial analyst on the budget team to focus on the CIP and grants. Historically, the city has not had a strong centralized granting process. There's been a lot of missed revenue opportunities to apply for indirect costs related to grants. And so this position would help centralize the process and make sure that the city is recouping where possible all those indirect costs through the grants. And then there is two fire inspector positions that would be added for multifamily housing inspections. These would be offset by the program revenues that are charged for those inspections. And there's an HR technician that would be added, this one. There was a 73% offset by reducing extra help and some various line items in the HR budget. So those are the positions that are recommended to be added via offset. And then the next, we have a list of new positions that would enhance services. So one of the positions would be, you know, the classification of the position is to be determined, but it would be a position available to help support boards and commissions and help with the records management. Then there's a senior management analyst in community development that would be assigned to the housing team. And city council knows housing was one of the city council's top priorities for this fiscal year. So included in this budget, there is additional personnel to support that. And later on, we'll talk about some also additional one-time monies to support that as well. Then we have two fire positions, a fire engineer and a fire captain. This would allow for the operation of Medic Engine 8 when combined with the positions that were added last year. And while we would be hiring, we would not hire a fire engineer and a fire captain off the street, we would basically create those new positions and then backfill by bringing on two new firefighter paramedics. As was mentioned previously by Mr. McIntyre, we now have the formal creation of the Information Technology Department. And they will need an administrative assistant. That is included in the budget. Also, there is, as we're going through the budget process, we realize we're getting close to bringing a new director on board. And in talking through the budget process, we wanted to allow for some flexibility for the new director to make decisions on basically the next position to add from the IT strategic plan. So that's why there's a two-year decided position. And basically, looking at the IT strategic plan, talking to IT staff, the new director, working with the city manager, would pick that next position to add to IT. And then there's also three criminal investigative technicians that are proposed to be added to the budget. Two and a half of those would be funded out of the general fund, and half would be funded out of Measure O. And so these criminal investigative technicians, while Chief Schindler could, you know, give a much better explanation than I, but the short of it is, they would help respond to calls for service that are less threatening. For example, let's say, maybe it's a parking issue or maybe someone had a laptop stolen or a package stolen off their porch, right? And so they may provide that initial response and help file reports for later follow-up. And then, we have the civil engineer that's proposed to be added to help with the land development services. This position would help with the inspections for various different land development projects. There is a management analyst that's proposed to be added to fleet and facilities. As was mentioned earlier, there's a lot of work that needs done, particularly in facilities. And to start the process of even managing the contracts to get some of that work done, additional support is needed. And so this management analyst would help with that. Then Ventura Water, there's two positions, one water plant operator and one wastewater collection utility worker. And so basically, for a total of 13 positions being added for service enhancements. And that is a high-level overview of the positions that are being added or proposed to be added in the budget. I'm now moving to the general fund. As was mentioned, the general fund budget for next year is slated to be $142 million. Looking at the resources, I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail on this slide because on the next slide, we'll go into a little bit more. But taxes are the biggest driver of revenue. You know, this is composed of property taxes, sales tax, TOT, cannabis tax, utility taxes and whatnot. And then we have charges for service. As was mentioned previously, that is primarily revenue that's coming in from the Parks and Recreation Department. But there are also other departments. You know, most departments have a small amount that will go into, or general fund departments have a small amount that will go into that line item. Other agencies, this is vehicle licensing fees. And then prior-year resources, $7.7 million. This is primarily money from the one-time investment plan that, like I said, will be transferred to other funds for the various different projects. And so with that, I'm going to go to the next slide. And we'll go a little bit more detail on the specific categories for revenues and resources. You know, our biggest category for revenues in the general fund is still going to be property tax, you know, at just over $35 million. We are anticipating continued growth in property tax. And next, you know, as we all know, the market is continuing to go crazy. Obviously, not all of that will be shown in the property tax revenues we received because of Prop 13. But there will be 2% from, you know, existing property owners. But then also, obviously, any property that's exchanged hands over the course of the year would hit the tax rolls at the higher value. For sales tax, we're anticipating getting a little over $33 million next fiscal year. Once again, we are continuously seeing strong growth. The rate of growth is, you know, beginning to level off for property tax, or for sales tax. And we are, you know, economists across the country are starting to anticipate that, you know, like I said, maybe early next year, we may even see a little dip in sales tax and, you know, in some economic activity. And that's something that we're monitoring and that was taken into account when looking at the projections for sales tax. You know, so like I said, there's some strong growth forecasted for the first six months of the year with some tapering in the second six months of the fiscal year. Charges for service, the big change in charges for service is that the, is going to be the additional money that was added basically to just get us back to pre-COVID levels. Other agencies, you can see the change there, the decrease there is that the ARPA funding is going to hit other agencies, that category this fiscal year, and we will not be receiving it next fiscal year. So next fiscal year, basically, most of that revenue will just come from the state vehicle license fees. And other taxes, once again, this is another category for strong growth. In other taxes, we have the TOT tax, which continues to be strong. Once again, you know, room rates are extremely strong. You know, at the last city council meeting, we had the Ventura Visitors Bureau give an update to city council on how well some of the things are going. And that's showing in the TOT that is being collected and we project to collect in the city. Also, cannabis revenues are in there. The Players Club revenues are in other taxes as well. Then the utility tax, like I said, you know, there really has been, the utility tax has been stagnant now for a number of years, a little bit of ups, a little bit of downs. Basically, you know, tied closely to people cutting the cord, you know, getting rid of some of their cable TV at home. And, you know, there are some new revenues being added. But there's also, like I said, people cutting the cord and a loss of revenue from one perspective. So like I said, there's just been a history of stagnation with the utility tax. Licenses and permits, we are anticipating to see nominal increases due to higher fees that we brought before city council the next meeting. Finance and forfeitures, we are anticipating that those will have a slight rebound as compared to prior fiscal years. Other miscellaneous revenues, you know, this is really just a wide variety of things. You know, typically, you know, someone does, you know, oftentimes, well, someone will damage property in the city and then reimburse the city. And that's where we'll put that money. That's one of the biggest items in that category. And then, we have use of money in property, which is basically the money we derive off of our investments. And we anticipate we will see some increases in that line item for next fiscal year. And that's basically the ongoing resources we have. And so a total of $132.4 million in ongoing resources in the general fund. And then we have internal transfers. And so that is basically transfers coming in to the general fund as a revenue source. And then there's also the use of fund balance. As was mentioned earlier, that use of fund balance is primarily money coming from the one-time investment plan from those ARPA, from that ARPA funding to fund various different initiatives in the budget. All right, and so, once again, we've got balanced expenditures in the general fund at $142 million. Personnel services is the largest expenditure in the general fund. Personnel services is the largest expenditure in the general fund at just under $90 million for next fiscal year. Supplies and services, we are seeing, there's a little bit of a jump from year to year in supplies and services in the general fund. The biggest driver is that there was, there was about $1.2 million moved back from Measure O into the general fund that was moved to Measure O two years ago to help balance the budget. So there was, as I said, there was enough capacity in the general fund to take that back this year, and so that was moved back to the general fund, and that is one of the primary drivers for the increase in supplies and services in the general fund in the proposed budget. Internal services, I said, once again, there's some increases there that I discussed, you know, primarily to fleet facilities that are driving the increase in internal services. Transfers, like I said, there is an uptick in transfers. Once again, that's primarily the ARPA money being transferred to other funds for the projects that is driving the increase there. I'm looking at expenditures by department. Like I said, you know, the police and fire in the general fund are still the two largest departments, followed by parks. And, you know, so no changes there, but then, once again, non-departmental has jumped up in the general fund because of the various different things that were discussed earlier. Once again, non-departmental, these are going to be, once again, the those ARPA funds, those one-time investment plan funds, and various different placeholders that have been authorized by, or that were authorized by city council for labor negotiations. And then, like I said, the other departments in the general fund remaining fairly consistent with the exception of some budget additions that we'll be covering shortly. And so, talking about the budget additions, the budget changes, here's the table that highlights what those changes are in the general fund, basically the kind of new monies that were added. They're listed here from largest to smallest, not necessarily in order of priority, but there were a total of seven and a half positions. So of the positions we reviewed here, seven and a half of those would be funded out of the general fund for a total of just under $1.3 million in additional costs. And then there's a placeholder, once again, a non-departmental item that is included in the budget for just under $920,000. This placeholder is for city council, previously this year authorized staff to apply for the SAFER grant. And depending on the number of firefighter positions that are approved, if any are approved in the SAFER grant, the general fund will need to provide matching funds. And so these are being put in reserve until a decision is known on what happens with the SAFER grant, so that money is available to act. Now, we do not know how many positions we will receive, or how many positions city council would approve given any grant award. So also, one, you know, staff wanted to note that there is also a need to start saving money for future class and compensation purposes. And so obviously, whatever is not used towards SAFER would be available for future class and compensation needs. Then, as I pointed out previously, there's $500,000 that's being added from the general fund to support the facilities fund. Once again, this is the first step that's anticipated, you know, that we'll be working on over the next few years to work on getting the facilities fund the appropriate amount of money it needs on an annual basis to make sure that our great facilities are being taken care of. As was also alluded to earlier, the housing element is a huge priority for city council this year. There is $460,000 included in the proposed budget specifically for the housing element. Of that, $410,000 is one time for various different needs to help get programs up and running that are included in the housing element. And then there's $50,000 that would be ongoing for additional contract services to support ongoing needs for the housing element implementation. Then there was also the workers' compensation benefit funds needed some infusion of cash, so there's an additional $400,000 for those funds. There was the three frozen positions at a total cost of $341,000. Has also been previously discussed with city council recently, the street lighting district. So the street lighting district needed an additional subsidy for next fiscal year, but also included in that budget request is some additional money to fund an assessment of the value for the streetlights. So that's included in the increase of the money the general fund would be sending to the street lighting district next fiscal year. There's various different operational enhancements that are proposed for community development. These would include things from updating office spaces to additional trainings and et cetera. Then, as was discussed earlier, adding the additional firefighter and fire engineer and fire captain positions would allow for medic engine eight, and it's going to cost about $89,000 a year for the fuel and for the maintenance of that vehicle. And then in community development, they're going to be working on updating their field vehicles for code enforcement and for building safety to make it so that in their vehicles they can have workstations to limit the amount of time that these positions have to spend driving back and forth from city hall to conduct work. So they'll be able to spend more time out in the field, more time doing inspections, more time getting work done. And the total net cost of that would be about $50,000. You know, there's already a significant portion of the funding needed that has been saved through the vehicle replacement costs that are paid on an annual basis. And then there's the five positions that were discussed with the various offsets. Like I said, the only position that wasn't 100% offset was that position in HR, and part of that that's not offset is just under $27,000. There's $25,000 for fire facilities master plan. This was part of the fire strategic plan and is included in the budget. There's also $22,000 to increase the contract for police counseling services. And then there's also $22,000 for half of an extra help position in the mailroom to help deliver mail. And then from there, I'm going to turn the time over to Mr. Morley.
Thank you, Michael. We're looking at a chart that shows the resources for the Measure O fund. The Measure O fund is projected to be at $19.5 million next year. You can see that other taxes, we call them other taxes, it's really a sales tax, it's a sales and use tax, but we call it other taxes because that's just the way it's categorized rather than saying it's a direct sales tax. We project that there's going to be about $16.8 million in taxes next year. Prior year resources is $1.8 million. The prior year resources is really just there to support ongoing CIP projects and capital expenditures that are going to occur in the Measure O program. Some of those get carried over, you know, projects were started this year and they get carried over into next year. We carry over the resources that were with them. Other miscellaneous revenues of .8 million is the support that we get from the county of Ventura to maintain the shelter that we operate. And use of money in properties is .1 million, which is basically just interest in other types of non-operating revenues that occur in Measure O funds, they do in other funds. Expenditures for the Measure O program, you can see personnel services is the highest, that $6.9 million. This funds police officers, firefighters, safe and clean workers, and some, well, I'll call them safe and clean workers because they're split with the homelessness program and the park and recreation maintenance services. Capital, I'll let you see it, $6.2 million. Again, that $1.8 million worth of prior year resources helps to support part of that. Services and supplies at $5.7 million. That's some of the services and supplies that are there to support the fire operations and the police operations, as well as a lot of maintenance operations that are occurring for sidewalks, streets, alleys, guardrails, a lot of the stuff that public works does that are considered maintenance and not capital services. Internal services of .5 million is just there to support some of the staffing and vehicles that are in, that are funded in the police and fire department. Reserves and contingency to .2 million. Budget changes that we had, Michael alluded to some of these budget changes a minute ago, but I'm going to talk about more, some of them in more specificity. The top item there, the grant match for the traffic signal upgrade, this is a capital item, and it's money that is being requested to support an additional grant that we have the ability to apply for. Not only do we have the ability to apply for, but we've pretty much been told that if you can match it, you can get the money. This gets added to the total cost of the traffic signal upgrade project that we already started. We've already received two grants for that. This will be the third grant, and those grants are being matched by money from the transportation fund and the Measure O fund. The 2023 West Side Sidewalk Repair ADA Improvements, this is a request to start another sidewalk project. And usually when we start a, when we do a sidewalk project in Measure O, it's normally, each project is about $700,000. We normally ask for about half of the money in the first year and the other half of the money in the second year because the projects always take about, they always take more than 12 months to complete. Community granting program is a program that was devised and being requested, and I think this is a program that's going to be similar to some of the other granting programs that we have in the city, but it's going to be more focused on some of the priorities that were agreed to when we went to the ballot for Measure O program, as well as when we created the ordinance for it. Signal rewiring, that's to repair the signals, four different signals in four different locations. It's just an ongoing need. Additional street paving for residential. Bridge maintenance master plan, this is something that gets us in a position where we can start doing, making more plans for what we're going to do with citywide bridges. Figuring the plaza improvements, those were some, this was some money that was actually requested in a prior year and approved, but because of what has happened with the pandemic and all of the activities that have occurred in the city of Ventura, the project could never get off foot, so we're requesting the money again. Extra help in enhanced focus area camera monitoring. We started this program a couple of years ago. There was an event that happened down at the Aloha Steakhouse, and we increased the surveillance in that area. Part of the increase in that surveillance area required us to, one, build one of the police programs with full-time personnel, but at the same time, we increased the amount of camera surveillance that we were doing. The camera surveillance is done by extra help staffing, and so this is just to get that funded to the position where we can continue to have that 12-hour-a-day monitoring of those cameras in that area. Grant consultant for Surfers Point Phase Two, we have about a $5.5 million CIP project at Surfers Point. We have the ability to reach out and try to apply for grants in the future to help fund that, and the $60,000 is to pay somebody to actually do the grant work so that we can make application and hopefully get the funding to complete that project in the future. Transfer funding, .5 FTE graffiti abatement. We had a person that was, at one time, doing work, part of, half of his work was being dedicated to graffiti abatement, and it was funded by another source, but because of the loss of another position in public works, that position, the person that was working in that position, had to dedicate all of their time to another general fund project in public works. So this half FTE funding brings, gives us the ability to dedicate a full FTE to graffiti abatement rather than just a half FTE to graffiti abatement. Purchasing two axle trailer lists for the Safe and Clean Program, and this is related to all of the good work that we're doing with regard to cleanups. And I think some of it's related to river cleanups, and it's money that's needed for hauling that we would do ourselves rather than hauling that would be done by somebody like E.J. Harrison. Wastewater Operations Sixth Year Fund, you can see that the revenue projected for next year, revenue expenditures projected for next year is a little lower than what we have in the current year budget, but if you look at the revenue that we have budgeted for next year and compare it to fiscal year 20 revenue, and I don't say fiscal year 2021 because fiscal year 2021 in water and wastewater both is kind of an anomaly here. Revenues and expenditures were both lower than what we would have expected to do, and I'm sure that it has something to do with the fact that most of the year we were shut down as a community, so the usage just wasn't what we all expected it to be. So if you compare that revenue projection for next year, you'll see that it's pretty significantly different than the revenue that was in fiscal year 1920. And it's also, we don't have that in front of us, but it's also consistent with what we would say or are saying in our rate study that we recently did. And that's balanced with the $27 million in expenditures. Again, kind of the same picture here. You can see that the revenue for next year is, you know, $4.5 billion lower than what we had in the budget for the current year. A couple of reasons for that. Last year in the budget, we had budgeted for some expenditures like electrical costs and transfers for state water, and some transferred to capital that weren't budgeted this year at the same level that they were last year. The revenue, again, if you take that, look at the revenue that we actually received in fiscal year 2019 or prior, you see it's consistent with what we received then. And if you look at the revenue that we received in fiscal 2021, you can see it's a couple of million dollars higher than the revenue that we received at that time. Again, the revenue for water is consistent with what we'd said in our rate study. It's been, if anything at all, maybe tempered a little bit with the fact that the staffing in Ventura Water has done such a good job with their budgeted expenditure projections. And this is the one-time investment plan for ARPA. As you know, we have this one-time investment plan, and part of it was funded with money that we call ARPA funds. Director Kuhn mentioned the second tranche that we're going to get this year for about $8.1 million, $8.2 million. That's part of the ARPA fund, so we received that much last year, we're receiving that much this year, total of about $16.3 million that we received from the ARPA plan. And this is how we've committed the funding in the future, currently and in the future. So you can see in the first column, the reserve funding, about, totals about $16.32 million. In the current year, we committed some of that money towards projects, and in the proposed year, you can see that we have $1.7 million proposed for fire stations, almost a million dollars for the Wedgwood Events Center, almost $200,000 for city hall repairs and third-floor build-out. We have a one-stop-shop permit center that we're planning for in the future, and this will get us started for that, and $3.5 million for information technology systems improvements. And as you can see, after we've done all of that, we still have an estimated balance of those ARPA one-time investment monies of about $7 million. And this is the other part of the investment plan money. This money was received by the city of Ventura as a settlement from SAE that was related to the Thomas Fire, but $8.37 million is what we originally received. The first year, you know, when we got this, we promised that we would put almost $3 million towards personnel enhancements, and the other $5 million we would use towards enhancing our reserves in a couple of different funds, one, the general fund, and the other, the risk fund. This last year, we did just that with the reserves. We solidified the reserves in the general fund and then the risk fund, and we committed eight, almost $800,000 approximately, almost a million dollars towards personnel enhancements. We propose to do another $700,000 in personnel enhancements in the coming year, leaving a balance of about $1.4 million for personnel enhancements. We're pretty much on target with our reserve enhancements, and so about $1.4 million of this part of the investment plan to be used in future years. And so about $1.4 million of this part of the investment plan to be used in future years. And I suppose that's the end of the presentation.
It is, and we're available for any comments or questions. Uh, Madam Mayor, if I may, if I just can provide a quick summary. So one of the things that you saw here were a lot of numbers and of course the budget's loaded with a lot of numbers. That's kind of what the, the trick of the, the book is. But really what it's doing is it's funding essential services for the organization and for the community. I mean, that's really what, what we're targeting here. The, what I have done in the past, and you can see the audience is filled with your department head team. Um, we dispensed this year with providing department head presentations. That was really at the request of the council that you had heard it last year and you thought you didn't need to hear about all of the detailed services they provide. Cause I realize this felt like a lot of numbers coming at you without the benefit of the background of what it is, it is they're providing. But we have confidence that the council understands the services that are being delivered by the department head team. But they are here tonight should you have any questions. And of course they'll be here through the entire budget process. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre, and thank you, Mr. Kuhn and Mr. Marley for the presentation. And we will now take council questions. You can go ahead and press your screen and request to speak. Uh, we have Deputy Mayor Schrader followed by Councilmember Brown.
Two things that I really wanted to highlight. Great work by a management team and finance, um, fabulous work. So, and if I look at this, there's $2 million of savings in the next five years from our debt refinancing. Right? $400,000 a year, basically, is that about right?
So in the general fund, yes, and there's some additional savings in, in Ventura Water for the water and wastewater funds as well.
And how much would that, how much savings would we have and they are estimated?
So I don't remember, I, I don't remember for the first five years, but basically in total, there was $25 million in savings. Roughly $5 million of that was for the general fund and roughly $20 million was for water wastewater.
And I don't know how you did this, but I think you picked the perfect day to refinance because the rates have done nothing but go up since the day we refinanced, so congratulations on that. Secondly, if I look at the surplus from '22 to '27, the total, that's $37 million. I know it's a projection. When was the last time the city had projected surpluses in five years in a row?
Not since before Mr. McIntyre were here, so.
So congratulations on that. Two just fabulous things. So on, um, we've added, I think this is on page 12, if you want to pull that up. If I look at that right, we've added 36 FTEs over the last four years. Is that, did I get that number right?
So are you going from FY19 or FY20?
Yeah, so if I'm looking at 18 to 19, that 735, 736 employees versus 772.
Yes, there's 58 from FY2019. Oh, are you looking at, are you looking at the total one at the top?
I'm looking at the total line because I, I want to count.
Yes, it is accurate.
So that's nine positions a year.
On average.
On, on, on average. And that's a little over 1% growth. That's, that, that's, that's to be applauded by the management team that, that we're managing that tightly. I know a lot of people will want to make hay out of the FTE growth just in this last year. But when you look at it over four or five years, I think it's a significant accomplishment. Uh, another question I have is, is there issues, if that's the right word, in collecting the appropriate amount due cities from cable negotiations and cable billing?
So the city does have an audit process. I mean, we're routinely auditing, auditing, um, the subscribers. I mean, with cable services, there's not a whole lot. Um, you know, here and there, you know, we'll find, um, some minor discrepancies. But the biggest thing outstanding is a lot of the streaming providers are not paying the proper tax. Um, and so we're actually, um, trying to work with Disney right now to make sure they pay their proper dues to the city.
And is that any issue at other cities as well?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Um, page 21, so there's, um, can you break out the safer and compensation? So there's 917 there?
Yes, so, so all of that number is dedicated for safer right now, right? And then obviously depending what happens with the safer grant, it could be available for the class and compensation study.
Okay, and your assumption then on the safer grant is how many additional staff?
So the application was for 13 additional positions.
And, and this would cover the 13?
Yes, it would.
Okay. Um, page 24, please. Oh, um, yeah, what, I'm sorry, one other question on 21. Sorry, Michael, this isn't a, oh. Um, on the workman's comp versus the benefits fund, the $400,000, how much of that is in benefit funds and how much is that in workman comp?
The vast majority is in workers' comp. Yeah, it's $300,000 and $100,000.
Okay, thank you. Um, page 24. So I know this is Measure O and we have $370,000 for sidewalk repair. Do we have more funding sidewalk repair in the general fund?
Yes, we do. And actually our public works director, Phil Nelson, um, has prepared some additional information and statistics regarding, um, funding for sidewalks.
So he knew I was going to ask that question?
Yes, he did. I gave him a heads up.
Uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Phil Nelson, your public works director. Uh, for sidewalks, Councilmember Schroeder, um, we have in the general fund $65,000, which has kind of been, uh, general fund has normally been rather low funding historically, unless for the, maybe the last 15 years or so. Most of the money we get is from Measure O. We have $200,000 in our maintenance operations that we've had over the last few years. As was mentioned earlier, around $700,000 in CIP projects. And then last year, your council added the safe sidewalk program for $350,000. So the, the total funding is around 1.3 million.
For next year?
For next year, that's correct.
Outstanding. That's, and if I'm not mistaken, three or four years ago, we were putting in $35,000.
I think it's $35,000, $40,000. So we've gone from that to 1.3 million and we are projecting that level of funding for the foreseeable future. Or we would be proposing that.
Congratulations. I, I mean, I think this is a red letter day for us that we've gone from spending $35,000 a year and next year we're going to be investing 1.3 million dollars in sidewalks, which, um, the risk management issue, right?
Yeah, yes, sir. It certainly is, and it's really all thanks to Measure O and your council for putting the money there.
Uh, great work, gang. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schrader. Now we have Councilmember Brown followed by Councilmember Friedman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I just wanted to ask about two pages in the budget book, but I don't think you have access to bring it up. But it's, um, page 94 of the staff packet. Um, so I just want to know basically about the unfunded liabilities. I attempted to locate them myself in the package. And I wasn't sure if under project 99, 29999, under citywide obligations, um, if that was talking, you know, indicating how much money we're, we have to put towards our unfunded liabilities or if that was page 133, under debt service obligation. So I just thought, maybe I'm wrong, I'm not sure.
So you were, you're referring to page 94?
Well, one was 94, one was 133. I couldn't figure out which one.
And what specific line item on page 94?
Uh, let me go to it.
I believe it's page 67 of the booklet, correct, Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, the booklet itself is page 67, but the staff report page is 94. Sorry. So under non-departmental, uh, expenditures.
Are you looking at the expenditures?
Under, by project.
Fund that says public liability ISF?
Expenditures, expenditures by project. Exhibit 31, 3.12C?
Got you.
And then it says 299, project 29999, citywide obligations.
Yes.
Is that the unfunded liabilities?
No, so, um, unfunded liability is not reported in budgetary reports. Um, those are an item that we find on, um, the year-end financial statements. Um, so the, the citywide obligations line item there, that $13.3 million, that is primarily, like I said, the, the ARPA funding, the one-time investment plan money that's being transferred to other funds um, for the various projects that were highlighted at the end of the presentation. And then various different, you know, there's, there's the safer reserve and then there's also other reserves that city council has approved in closed session.
Um, and so why is there a decision not to report out on, on the unfunded liabilities since, you know, in 2019 and beginning of 2020? Those, that was the largest impact to the budget at that time. And so now that we're finally recovering from the pandemic, I thought it would be a good exercise, if you will, to understand where we are with the unfunded liabilities and how we've managed or chosen to deal with that.
In January, staff reported back, um, with the annual audit and the annual comprehensive report on the unfunded liability. Um, like I said, that is an item that's a balance sheet item. Um, and due to the nature of governmental accounting, um, for governmental funds, um, you, you have a short-term focus when it comes to budget and a long-term focus when it comes to, um, the, the annual audit for, for simplicity sake. Um, and so like I said, so in, in the budget, we deal with actuals. We deal with the money we're spending every year. So our payments to CalPERS are included in the budget. But, you know, the budget's a one-year plan, not a multi-year, long-year, long, long-term plan. And that's why there's nothing in there for the future, um, unfunded liabilities.
So we never came up with a plan. So I'm not on Fab anymore, so I don't have this, I don't know. But we, we never came up with the, or continued that conversation about coming with the long-term plan on how to continue to fund and how much money we were going to, uh, commit every year as it increased. That wasn't something that we agreed on?
Um, there have been conversations at Fab about what to do with this line item. It's an ongoing discussion and it's actually going to be one, an item that's discussed at the next Fab meeting. Um, but there has been nothing approved formally for a plan to move forward, but is an item that is, um, of keen interest and is being discussed.
So at the point that we do make a decision and vote on it, then it would show up on, in, as a part of our, um, expenditures that are a part of a long-term plan over, I don't know, maybe a 30-year period?
It depends on the decision that's made, but it would be reflected appropriately.
The only reason why I ask is because as we have our budget conversations, especially back in 2019 and beginning of 2020, the conversations were, we don't know what to do because we were going to be negative every year. We were going to be in the red every year because of these unfunded liabilities. And now there's a projection that we're going to be, um, in the black. And so I'm just wondering, is that a conservative figure? Does it include the unfunded liabilities or does it not include it?
No, so in our, in our five-year forecasts, we do include obviously the annual, annual contributions that would be required for, um, to CalPERS, for both the regular portion and the unfunded liability.
Well, I just meant in the slides that you showed tonight, when it shows the forecast over the next four or five years, does that include the unfunded liabilities?
So on this slide?
No, not that one.
So this is the only slide that referenced anything other than the, you know, that, for the, for the light base basically would include anything for the unfunded liabilities? And the expenditures, yes, our increasing payments are included in there, it's factored in. Um, and then obviously any payments that are due next year are factored into the other slides. But this would be the only slide that addressed future outlook for, um, the additional payments would be required to make to CalPERS.
Thank you. That's pretty much all I was asking. I just, when you said it was separate, I was, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't separate from the forecast and outlook that we were given over the next five years. Um, I would like to request, and of course I know it has to be agreed upon by my colleagues in Fab, um, that in the future that there is, um, a reference to where we're at with the unfunded liabilities moving forward because that may increase as the state has indicated every year. And I want to be able to have a clear picture of where we're at, not just with if property taxes increase and we increase revenues with cannabis retail sales and all that. I also want to know, you know, how many more million dollars is the state going to make our responsibility as we move forward? So, thank you, that was.
Yes, and for, just for clarification purposes for the, um, for city council. So updated numbers are released once a year. Um, you know, that is the only time we get updated numbers for unfunded actuary liabilities. Like I said, there's millions of facts, kind of data points that go into the calculations for those numbers. Um, we, as the city cannot calculate them, CalPERS has to calculate them for us. And so we do share those on an annual basis as they're released from CalPERS.
So there is, are you saying there's no controlling mechanisms that allow us to kind of make a general prediction? Like in other words, they have a cap on how much they can increase that percentage? Like they can't just next year say, you know what, we're just going to do 20% next year. You're going to have to, is, what I'm suggesting is, isn't there a conservative number that we can come up with to kind of give us an idea? That's all I'm talking about.
So we don't have any authority to control CalPERS?
No, I'm, I understand we have no control over the state. You don't have to keep repeating that, I understand that. What I'm asking is, is, is there any laws in place currently right now that govern how quickly the state can increase the percentages of what they make the cities responsible for as they continue to make a larger response, make us, uh, a larger portion of the city to be responsible for? So in other words, they might increase it 2% this year, 5% next year, 10%. And I'm just asking, is there a state law that says you can't raise it more than 20% a year? Or something like that? I'm just asking, is there anything we can do to get a better picture? In other words, we can also take a previous projection and say over the last five years, it's only raised 1%, 3%, 5% on average and weaken, um, you know, make a, a guesstimate or a hypothesis that in the next five years it'll go up 2% or 3%. Maybe if they add an extra 10%, if we want to be more conservative, it might look like this. I, I'm not saying that you guys are wizards and that you can predict the future or, you know, read the minds of CalPERS and determine exactly what their complex calculations are going to end up being. I'm just wanted to ask the question to make sure that, um, that we move forward realistically because before we hit the pandemic, though, that was the number one most important issue to the budget, impact to the budget. So that concludes my questions for now.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Now we have Councilmember Friedman followed by Councilmember Holter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, as a member of the Fab Committee, um, this is the second time, uh, seeing most of this. And Michael and Greg, uh, thank you for the presentation tonight and taking the suggestions that we made in our meeting, what, a couple of weeks ago? And thank you to the city manager for presenting us with the balanced budget. Um, in our Fab meeting, um, we were talking about a couple of, um, quality of life issues. Um, one having to do with sidewalks, as the deputy mayor has alluded to. Uh, one of the things we discussed was maybe to try to get even more money to sidewalks. And Phil, I know you weren't at that meeting, but you might have heard about this. The safe sidewalk repair program, which we initiated a couple of years ago. And actually it was, uh, brought forward to the council by, uh, by Councilmember Nazarenko and myself. And the idea came from the city of Pasadena who has that program. And it's, it's very popular there, but not so popular here in Ventura. So rather than, and this is for the city manager and maybe public works director and, uh, Budget Staff to consider, is the money that we've currently allocated and would allocate forward, instead of it being made available for that program, just take that, that three hundred and fifty thousand, and then let Public Works, based on risk management assessments, look at maybe some of the worst sidewalks in the city and allocate money to getting those sidewalks repaired sooner than later. And now you potentially would have an extra three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the sidewalk budget that would be used for sure, as opposed to maybe used by members of the public who want to help repair their own sidewalk and take advantage of the program. But unfortunately, it just wasn't that popular. So I'm not, I'm not married to it myself. And if we can get more sidewalks fixed, I'm a hundred and ten percent in favor of it. And that seemed to be what I was hearing in the Fab Committee as well, by my colleagues. The second item, another quality of life item, is the issue of graffiti that we have in our city. I guess every city has that. And I know we have one full time employee to deal with graffiti, so we are a city that cannot be unfortunately proactive, we have to be reactive to phone calls or emails or however the public lets us know they, there's a graffiti issue in their neighborhood. So one of the ideas that we were talking about was the possibility of maybe contracting out for a one time clean sweep through the city to magically have this all disappear in a very short period of time. And then maybe allocating one additional employee, a, a new employee, who would in essence double the number of staff members who take care of graffiti on a daily basis. And maybe between the one time sweep and adding, doubling our graffiti staff, so to speak, abatement staff, we would, we could be a little bit more proactive as opposed to reactive. And I would ask the, maybe the city manager, I had mentioned in the Fab meeting, I, I don't think this is a budget breaker, either for the one time or the potential additional employee. Can you, have you had a chance to think about that a little bit more, based on what we discussed in the meeting?
Thank you, Councilmember Friedman. The answer is yes, we, we've had some preliminary conversations based upon Fab's suggestions. And one of the places we do have money still sitting in reserve is the ARPA money that we set aside for beautification. It's, it would be one time monies, but it's something that we could look at. Thank you, Michael. So we have, after this year, we'll still have about seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars in fund balance from ARPA, set aside for beautification, that we could take some of those funds and, and invest it in that kind of effort, whether it's a one time kind of mass cleanup and/or adding more headcount to, to do the, the graffiti abatement, that that's all a possibility. The only concern I would have is one time monies being used for ongoing operations, but that's certainly something we could probably, in future years, figure out how to absorb that second position over time. So all, all that's a possibility certainly, and if it's the council's will, we can adjust the final budget to reflect that.
So how, what would be the best way to somewhat communicate this to you from the standpoint of the quote council's will? And I, just, just to say that, I think we all pretty much hear from similar constituents, regardless of the district that you're in. And this is, this seems to be a pretty universal issue. I think people, from a quality of life standpoint, they want to, they want to live in a quote beautiful community as much as possible. And it's something that unfortunately, it's hard to keep up on. And in, in, in our city, it's particularly difficult to keep up on it when you have only one employee dealing with the entire city. Hence the discussion that we had in, in Fab. I think that, I think that the residents have spoken pretty clear, at least to me, and I would ask my colleagues if, if they want to check, check in as well, that this is a, a, a big issue. And fortunately, it's, it's not an overly expensive issue compared to a lot of the other things that we're spending money on. But I think it's an issue that is, that the public would really appreciate knowing that we're putting additional effort in smoothing out our sidewalks and, and taking care of, of our graffiti. So what would be the best way for the council to telegraph that to you?
My suggestion would be is just asking staff to come back at the next workshop for the budget with a proposal that would address both the, the ongoing and the one time, just, just so we know what the numbers look like. And we would ask you, when you finally adopt the budget, to either amend what we have, we have proposed to you, or just do an offset, whichever is the council's preference. But let us come back with a, a number and what that program might look like, and then be able to share it with the council. And this would be on the, on May twenty third, right, Michael?
So you could come, you could come back to us with what, basically what we just discussed?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
And, and let me just take a step further. As, as long as there's council consensus for us to do so, if, if Councilmember Friedman is the only voice out there saying this, and the rest of you are not interested in this conversation, tell us now. Otherwise, we're happy to, to do this kind of calculation on behalf of the council.
Okay. Again, thank you so much. Appreciate the staff being here as well. And those are my questions for now. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Friedman. Now we have Councilmember Holter, followed by Councilmember Johnson.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, staff. I wanted to first say that the presentation is extremely understandable. And I'm one of those horrible engineers by major that I find it very interesting and actually fun to look at this. And so you did a great job. There's only one slide, number twenty eight, I'm, just maybe explain that one, a one time investment plan, SCE, probably because it was the last one, that I kind of lost, lost my focus a little bit. So if you could explain that one to me, what that is?
Sure. After the Thomas fire,
Okay.
there was, there was a lawsuit that included SCE about what the fire started and what their, what their responsibility to mitigate the damages that the fire caused. And this was a settlement that came from that lawsuit. And this was the amount of money that the city of Ventura receives as part of that settlement. It was required to be put on reserve for a couple of years. And then after, after that time period was over with, it became part of our fund balance in the general fund, it was dedicated towards this investment plan. So at the same time that we were receiving the ARPA money, this money became available to us to use for future expenses. And so that's why we separate this portion from the other portion.
Excellent. Is, is that, is there, that lawsuit's completely over now at this point, right?
We're clear of that, yes.
Okay, so a bunch of miscellaneous questions here, so. First off is on page five of the booklet, the proposed budget is, just curious, on the source, the twenty sixteen, twenty twenty American Community Survey, I just noticed the home sale price is five ninety-three, it just seems very dated compared to where we're really at today. Is there any current information that could have been included in this?
Yes, so that was page five of the budget document, right? Not page five of the presentation?
Not of the presentation, of the budget document.
Yeah, and like I said, we're, we're always going through and looking at those. And like I said, we'll double check and make sure we have the most updated information possible. You know, per that source, when we publish the adopted budget. But you're right, I mean, it is, it is changing, it's, it's changing constantly.
Rapidly, yeah. Okay. And then on page seven of that document, that below is a comparison of like sized coastal charter cities within California. It's pretty impressive. How did we keep our total cost per capita down to two thousand and fifty-five when everyone else is between twenty-six hundred and ninety-two hundred dollars? That seems remarkable.
Like I said, I don't, I don't know the other cities' operations well enough to, to say for certain. But I think, you know, as, as was pointed out by the deputy mayor, you know, when you look at staff that was added, like I said, it's kind of small percentages here and there. So like I said, I, I think we can say, and historically, you know, city council has asked staff to, to be very cognizant of the resources we have. And to try to spend the money we have very wisely.
That is a remarkable number, though, from what I, it stood out to me.
If I can, knowing these cities generally, but not specifically, keep in mind, one of their biggest drivers of our costs is compensation, payroll. And we are not the highest paid organization, and that would be reflected here as well. We hope to address that in the future, but for the moment, we are nowhere near something like a Santa Monica.
Got it.
With its very generous benefits.
Good point. On page ten, we talked about Measure O and budget principles. I'm just curious, I was part of the getting Measure O and helping to get it passed for our city. I, did the principles and what we're funding, did it morph over the last few years? Or has it stayed pretty consistent with what, what the voters voted for? Just out of curiosity, what would you say?
So the programs being funded in Measure over the last few years has stayed pretty consistent.
Okay.
Right, you know, and just the principles where things added, like I said, three budget cycles ago. And a lot of it's right, focusing, hey, let's, let's finish what we start. Let's, let's, you know, let's, you know, let's make sure that not too much is going towards ongoing, so that there's some, so some capital programs can be done, you know. So this was something, like I said, three budget cycles ago was approved by Measure O and by city council.
Because one of the things that was discussed at nauseam on many of those campaign committees was raising the standards across our city, whether it's the infrastructure, sidewalks, streets, urban forest and so forth. Also funding for the arts and the things that make Ventura such a unique place for people to enjoy and visit and live in. And I just don't see a lot going towards that direction. So, and yet that was a huge part of the campaign.
To clarify so I make sure I understand your comment, it was just, you don't see a lot going towards the arts?
Correct.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure it wasn't the whole list.
Well, and arts and, well, beautification. I think I agree with Councilmember Friedman that I would be supporting something like what he's discussing as well. I think there's a lot more we can do from beautification and raising the standards, but I'm very happy with what this budget is showing me, don't get me wrong. But that was the one thing that caught my attention, having been part of that campaign.
Councilmember, Councilmember Holter, if I can, really quick, the, I was here for this conversation, as was the mayor and Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Friedman. And it was a, it was a difficult conversation because of what the intent under the ballot measure was with regards to what was promised verbally versus what was, what was known as far as the ballot language specifically. And the city, the then city attorney was fairly adamant with the, the then council about what, the, the ultimate promise was what was, what were the words on the ballot? That's, that, that's what held sway for, because what we found ourselves doing is moving more and more towards Measure O to take care of city business. And the then council had some real concerns about overly relying on Measure O to kind of pay the bills rather than to enhance the community. And that, that became a point of contention for the council, and it, they worked itself out eventually, but that's why we came up with the principles that we have today for Measure O. And again, this council can change those principles, I want to be very clear about that. But, but what was understood by the voters and the way former city attorney Greg Diaz put it was, the only thing we were certain of is when the voter voted, they saw the language in front of them that they were checking the box on. But maybe they heard or read or were assured, we, we couldn't make a commitment or guarantee that that was indeed
Got it.
A guarantee at the end.
I can see that. And that, that's what stood out to me compared to the campaign and what was discussed at nauseam versus what reality. So that's the only disappointment, but otherwise, I still like the items that are being funded. Now moving on is city, citywide broadband, one of our new goals. Hopefully we see that coming back soon, that's very important. Pro housing designation on page eleven, do we yet have any indication of what that really means, what we need to do?
Peter Gilli?
I'm a little scattered on his questions, so maybe getting up and down a couple of times, sorry.
On the topic of the pro housing designation, the, at this point, we don't know how many points we would score, but we're confident that if, if the budget is adopted as, as proposed, at least as the, the funding for the housing implementation measures, that every implementation measure we, we check off will get us more points towards eventually having enough to, in order to get that designation. And the idea was to relook at it during the next budget year at, at some point to look at how many points we felt we could get and then have a strategy for how, how to get the rest of them.
Okay. Because I, we're going to have more and more conversations, such as what we saw last week, I think. And it's going to be interesting how those conversations may be reflected on our desire to be a pro housing city. So I want to throw that out. And then, let's see, the only other thing, Peter, while you're up here, Mr. Gilli, sorry, is if, when it comes to economic development, I will do everything I can as a leader of the city to help make sure that we continue down the path of making all those strides and improvement in community service, community development. Because that's probably in my mind, the largest thing we can do for, for economic development is, because we've always had people willing to invest here. It's just the experience they have once they get here that we have difficulty with. So let's continue down that path, and I'm willing to participate in that, that solution, just so you know. Now, a couple of other questions, I think that might have been it on Peter's side there, okay, is, let's see, oh, the crosswalks, the light, is there a budget there for, like, Mr. Nelson? Those crosswalk lights I find very, very effective, especially on the avenue, because it's hard to tell if somebody's really wanting to cross or if they're just walking slower or, or talking to somebody. So do we have any more of those budgeted? I think those are an awesome improvement.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Holter. We are using some of the safe sidewalk money that your council authorized earlier this year on sidewalk lighting. We also normally have in our operational budget and transportation money for ADA ramps, safe sidewalks, striping, those kinds of things to improve pedestrian safety.
Having spent the last three years before my mother, my mother's passing, trying to push a wheelchair on our sidewalks, I'm amazed at the lesson I've learned on how difficult in every little crack, how difficult it is to push a wheelchair, you know, across those. So the more attention we place on the sidewalks, I'm very happy with that. Traffic calming, is there any funding for traffic calming, whether it be on streets like Poli and Foothill, or maybe on Thompson, places like that?
Yes, again, in our transportation budget, in the operational budget, we always have an amount in there for traffic calming and doing the very things you just described.
Okay. Let's see, this is minor, but purchasing a two axle trailer for clean and safe, I'm not sure who that would be, but is, what is that exactly? Is that just to pick up stuff off the street? I'm just very familiar with trailers, so.
It is for the larger items, the larger pickups, we don't have, we, a vehicle that's either too small or way too big.
Got it.
So something that's really right sized for the crew and the operator.
Yeah, because that seems, for eighteen thousand dollars, that seems like a very nice trailer compared to what I am used to getting from me. Also, oh, I think from a financial standpoint, Mr. Cohen, is, is, is there any deferred costs that might bite us after these, these five years that are identified in this budget?
So deferred costs for?
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
You know, for, for example, for all the positions that are being added, right, they're being added, they're fully funded. We've looked at the costs associated with adding vehicles for those positions, you know, just one example, right, of Medic Engine Eight, we've looked at the costs of running that engine, the additional wear and tear on the vehicle, the additional fuel. So we're really having included with all the proposals, the cost that's needed for, on an ongoing basis.
Got it. But I guess what I'm concerned with is if there's something that's continuing to pile up, and that may be one of them, is it deferred costs with fire engines? Then just to be aware of that, in a way, it's a little bit what Councilmember Brown was referring to when she was talking about pensions.
Got you. So you're talking about the basically deferred maintenance that we have across the city?
Yeah.
There's hundreds of millions of dollars of deferred maintenance.
That's what I thought, okay, okay. And then, let's see, I think there's one last question, let's see. Fire, there is on page fifty-three of the booklet, fire prevention, proposed twenty-two, twenty-three, one point four million. What, it's fifty-three, two, one, zero, is a project? Is there a summary of what that's about? Any idea? Is there a summary of what that's about, any idea? Chief Endia, maybe? I don't know if you have these memorized.
What was the page number again?
It was page 53, and it's fire prevention, proposed for 2223 is 1.4 million. So I see it as something substantial.
Sorry for the delay, it might be the operations for the division.
Chief, I think it's the operations for the division.
Yeah, that number is basically all eight employees and the operations of the entire division. So that's the fire marshal and the eight staff members underneath.
Got it.
And everything that they're going to do during that fiscal year. That's the entire division.
Got it, okay, very good, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
And I think that is my only question. I think as we look at city beautification, which I think goes hand-in-hand with quality of life and with our desire to have people come and visit and spend money here and go back home, is showcasing our history, which is very rich, showcasing our art, which is also extremely talented and entrepreneurial, and making sure that just simply taking care of our medium strips and our urban forest and our streets and sidewalks are done at a much higher level than what we're used to over the last 30 years. So, those are things that I'm always interested in. That's all I have for now, thank you, great job.
Thank you, Councilmember Halter. And now we have Councilmember Johnson, followed by Councilmember Sanchez Palacios.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, everybody, for the great presentation. I really appreciated the PowerPoint. I would ask that next time that Fab get, Pete get the actual budget in advance, instead of just the PowerPoint. In the budget document...
Councilmember Johnson, may I respond?
Sure.
There are just some logistical challenges to producing a budget document two weeks earlier. I mean, as it is, you know, we barely printed a document the day before the agenda went out. You know, it is, with the requirement we have to propose by charter to present the budget by the end of April and transmit the budget by the end of April, it is really challenging, it would cut out on the quality of the product if we were to produce something any earlier.
I appreciate that, I'm just thinking of earlier Fab meetings I'd attended before I was on council. Will this budget document, I notice it doesn't have the budget discussion chapter, will it include the budget discussion chapter?
Yes, this proposed budget document did not have that. Like I said, this year, we are running shortened staff resources, and we reduced that portion from the proposed budget for this current year.
Thank you, and will we get the, something like the proposed expenditure detail?
That was transmitted to City Council with the agenda report.
Oh, thank you. I was out of town, so I didn't, I just got in last night, so I had a lot of homework to do today. When we look at, let's see, I have in my notes here, say Exhibit 2.0.1. This is like changes by fund. This would be on page 16. I noticed the column on estimate of fund balance is gone, would it be possible to get that back?
So, I'm, we're going to pull it up real quick so we can, page 16, you said?
Yeah, yeah. You know, the prior year's budget document included the estimate of fund balance, which I found helpful. I certainly had highlighted a number of things in that last year.
Yeah, like I said, we'll look at, you know, typically, there's a little bit of difference between the level of detail and the proposed budget and the adopted, but we'll definitely make sure it's in the adopted budget.
Thank you, and I would appreciate it, I greatly appreciate it, if we could include some detail on the Measure O budget. I know I see it in the CIP in the back, but the actual Measure O budget, I think, should be included somewhere in the budget document that we publish, more than just the changes and more than just the CIP. And then I have some questions for some department heads, and I'll start with Mr. McIntyre. Can you please explain this reclassification of the FTEs that were part of Ventura Water Pure and are now unwaterified?
In, I'm sorry, the employees that are on the Ventura Water Pure project?
Yes, because I see that it shows them as no longer being VWP, they're just being switched over to an engineer, a management analyst.
Right, so the Ventura Water Pure project's being managed out of my office directly, it's not a part of Ventura Water anymore because of the high-profile nature of the project and the importance of it, it's something I wanted to keep very near to me. So we have an office now of Ventura Water Pure headed by Linda Samansky, and there are four additional employees. I think what happened when we started to create the team, we were creating more generic positions, knowing we needed a leader, we needed an engineer, we needed an analyst, we needed an admin, et cetera. What we've been able to do then is just build the team based upon what our current needs are today. So I'm not quite sure if that answers your question, Councilmember Johnson?
Well, so, will they still be working exclusively on Ventura Water Pure?
Absolutely.
Okay. And the funding is then coming from the water department?
Correct.
Thank you. When I look, and I'm going to pick on you, Mr. McIntyre, when I look at the different departments and I look at the personnel costs, the greatest increase in personnel costs, 20%, is in your department, and you don't have any additional FTEs. We have departments that are adding a number of FTEs and still have a smaller increase. But in your department, we're seeing a 20% increase in personnel costs.
And that would probably be related to the two, remember, my office also includes the city clerk's office. And so that would reflect the two positions in the city clerk's office. I think there's one more member of Ventura Water Pure that's going to be added. Again, it would fall under the umbrella of the city manager's office. We are transferring out one position, Safe and Clean is moving to community development. I'm not quite sure if I'm remembering anything else of note, Greg, you're looking like maybe you have something, but is there anything else of...
Oh, I would disagree with you, it's because of the growing Ventura Water Pure program.
Right.
I see, and those are just higher-paid positions because they're more specialized? Thank you. So when we talk about housing, you know, I'm happy to see a senior management analyst. As I get into that department summary, perhaps Mr. Gilli could come up? Thank you, Mr. Gilli, I'm looking at page 42. Where I see housing, and I see it, you know, the line item for housing is more than doubled. Is that, does that include that housing position, the senior management analyst? What else is, what else is in this $400,000 increase?
So, Councilmember Johnson, are you referring to Exhibit 3.06C?
Yes.
That is the additional, not just one time, but the additional 460,000, so not related to personnel on that particular line. The actual personnel would be reflected in Exhibit, and, Mr. Kuhn, please correct me if I get this wrong, Exhibit 3.06B, the personnel services line, that is increasing, that reflects the actual staffing.
Thank you. But so then this other, and I'm very happy to see it, this other 400,000 then, under 31119?
Yes.
What are we getting for that?
So, the goal of that amount of funding is to be able to get consultant support for as many of the first-year items on the housing element objectives. Those are going to include bringing a lot of our ordinances up to state law. A lot of them haven't been updated over the years. Working on the affordable housing overlay, which is a tool that should be able to allow us to add quite a bit opportunities for affordable housing projects, as well as some of the buy-right processes as well. As well as in the first, in 2020, at the beginning of 2023, the topic of tenant protection is going to be handled at the Planning Commission, who will make a recommendation to council. Some of those funds will go towards experts and consultants to provide Planning Commission with an explanation of all the tools out there in that, in the topic area. So, that is what the $400,000 is going towards.
Thank you. And if we skip down to code enforcement, I notice that it's a pretty substantial cut in the budget. I assumed that was because you're losing a code enforcement position, is that correct?
Again, if it's part of Exhibit 3.06C, then that's not personnel, and...
Peter, can I jump in?
Yes.
Yes, so one of the things that's happened, so in the code enforcement project, the code enforcement manager position was reclassified. So part of the salaries and benefits from that position are not hitting that project. So you have some of that moving out, and then you also have the additional money from last year that was added one time from the investment plan. So it's really a combination of those two items, is the reclassification of the manager, so that manager's now kind of varying a broader group.
Right.
And then the one-time money from last year.
Well, that makes sense, that would be the position I thought maybe was, was not in there. Then going back to that, then, because my take on this exhibit expenditures by project was that this did include personnel costs, does it not?
Yes, you're absolutely right. Mr. Kuhn was kind to not actually directly, tell me I was wrong the first time. If you look above the housing line, you'll see that Community Development Administration, that number has gone up. Because that's just where it's placed at this point. The 400,000 in housing is that other amount. The extra personnel is living in the line above it.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, I'm glad I got that cleared up. And I apologize to my colleagues, like I say, you know, I really didn't see this until today, and it took me some time to work through these things. And those would be all my questions for Mr. Gilli, thank you, Mr. Gilli. I want to chime in on the graffiti issue. I too think it would be important that we use some one-time money to, just to get some of it cleared up. And I'm sure that we're going to need to go back to at least 1.5 FTE. When we had 1.5 FTE, we were doing a pretty good job, but not a great job. And my hope is that if we actually did really clamp down for a year, that it would reduce some of the ongoing pressure. Because so much of the graffiti we see is graffiti that is in response to graffiti that had not yet been taken down. Is Ms. Rungrin here? I have a question about water. Hi, Ms. Rungrin, thank you.
Hello.
Good. So I'm on page 63, and I'm looking at the transfers line. And I'm curious, really, in these expenditures by category, what are the transfers that we're looking at out of that $12 million?
So I will ask Mr. Kuhn to help with that answer, please.
It's a debt, and it's being transferred to capital. So that's, for debt, we transfer money for debt payments, and then the rest of it is for capital.
Thank you. And then, Ms. Rungrin, as we look at the wastewater capital fund, I see a lot of savings from things that didn't have to be done, is that correct? As I recall, things like the tertiary filter replacement, were we not planning on spending a lot more money on these things? And the cogeneration system?
You might see savings in there because we were behind schedule on some of these, so that the funds will be used eventually.
Thank you. And those would be my questions for Ms. Rungrin, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Those are all my questions, I do have some comments for later, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson, and now we have Councilmember Sanchez Palacios.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to, I think my colleagues have made several comments that I would have covered too. Certainly, and I don't know if I missed this, or if we haven't gone through it, but the community projects or community beautification, is there a, do we have a list somewhere of like what it would include? We don't, huh?
What we did is we set aside the money with the hopes of coming up with various programs, whether it was ongoing cleaning or beautification with regards to things like monument signs, you know, the Welcome to Ventura concept. So it was intentionally set up to be vague with the idea that we could draw from this funding source, whatever, there's a capital item or an ongoing item, and the council had yet to define that for us, so that's why the money is sitting idle.
Okay, yeah, and I would echo and support the graffiti program as well, that would be important. In regards to, I think, just broadband has been one of the things on our list, and I just wanted to acknowledge, Mr. Nelson, thank you for answering my questions earlier today. That's a conversation I look forward to continuing. I know that we have that and other projects sort of as placeholders along the budget, but at some point, it would be great to just maybe either one-on-one conversations, continue talks, and just kind of go from there, because I feel like we, as a whole, could use some information. And I don't know that it's appropriate to have to have yet another presentation, but certainly would be open to having conversations with staff.
Certainly, and I think our intentions are to offer Phil and his team up to the various individual council members for private meetings to be able to gain a better understanding of both, you know, the intent of the fiber program and the specifics about sci-fi.
Perfect. And then, I think the last thing was just that ARPA money runs out, right? We're no longer, and that's why some of our numbers are negative, or at least not as great. Any sort of maybe creative ideas into how we can continue to maybe supplement those items or some of those items?
Yeah, and so I think, let me go, I was going to, you know, this is going back a little bit to what we showed in Budget Workshop Number One, right? But so the ARPA money, like I said, we are going to spend it all, it's going to run out, it's not going to be around forever. But I think on this slide here, if you look at, like I said, the second to last row at the bottom, that's kind of, this slide shows one-time resources. So even after that, we are still currently forecasting good, healthy growth for the beginning, right? So we're not using the ARPA money on ongoing costs. So to prevent us from getting in a position where we run into problems because of money right now, right? So we're really focusing on using it on one-time items, like I said, that are included in that investment plan.
And Councilmember Sanchez Palacios, if I can, if I'm hearing your question right as well, is one of our increased efforts is going to be in the world of grants, in the end of the world of federal appropriations earmarks. And the idea that we can find some more one-time monies that would be probably, would likely be dedicated to more specific projects, whereas ARPA was broader, but it was still a federal grant, if you think about what ARPA really was. So, the idea of our continued investment in that, and I think Michael, or the budget team showed a new position that we were asking for, a senior financial analyst in finance, that's going to not necessarily be the folks going out and grabbing the money, but just having more of a grants focus in our organization, because right now, it's still fairly, it's not well-centralized, and having just more eyes, eyes who are hired explicitly to manage and/or identify future grants, that's kind of what we're hoping for here.
Okay, that was going to be my other question, so thank you for checking on that. And thank you, Michael, and your team, for also answering my questions earlier today, I appreciate it, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez Palacios. Let's see, I have a few questions. One of the speakers mentioned that the library funding was at risk, and I know that that's something that comes from the county, but do we have any information about that?
It's the first time I'm hearing of this, and Nancy O'Connor is certainly in the audience, our Parks and Recreation Director, and if she has any additional information.
And while she's walking up, the city's portion of the library funding is there, right? It remains untouched.
Mayor, give me a little bit more information about what you're, when you say you're hearing that the money is in danger, because just like Michael said, our portion is there, so I'm not sure. I do know that our Measure O funding that we've had for the Hill Road, this technically is the last year, but it would be something that we would come back during the budget process and ask for that as an ongoing thing. But I'm not sure what information that you have, because I haven't heard that.
Yeah, actually, the first I hear of it was tonight. Earlier, Ms. Campos mentioned that, I guess, the funding for the library was at risk, so I was just wondering if any of you all or any of us had heard anything?
We'll follow up, but I hadn't heard that. And I'm in pretty close contact with their director on a fairly regular basis, and she hasn't mentioned anything. But we'll follow up.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. All right. And then on Slide 13, we have the Community Development Secretary position eliminated. Can you remind me of why we're eliminating that position?
Yes, and I think for detailed explanation, I think Peter can jump up and talk to some logistics in the department and some of the goals he's trying to achieve.
On this particular change, this has already been done, and this was tied to an attempt to raise the salaries for planners midstream, kind of ahead of the class and comp study. And the only way to make that all pencil out was to find a vacant position. And we are adjusting the department to have more of our services to be able to be done without the need of as many people in that particular job classification, so that's why it was that vacant spot. But it was tied to a pay increase.
So are some of those duties being handled through maybe the technology that's being used, or how are some of those duties taken care of?
Yes, a combination of the new technology, a combination of having some of our technicians or even planners do a little more of that because we had to make that cut. So it's a combination of those things.
Okay. Thank you. And the safer grant, when do we hear back if we are awarded some of those funds?
Certainly. We will hear as soon as this month, but as late as September. So we just won't know where we fall in the queue, if we're in the queue. I mean, we're in the queue certainly for consideration, and we don't know when our grant will be reviewed.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And I had a similar question to Councilmember Sanchez Palacios. Some of the community beautification projects, I was just wondering if we had other projects identified? Or if we do decide to go forward with graffiti abatement, how much, well, you can bring more information as to how much and then how much could be possibly left over for other projects?
Right. We will bring that and we'll show you what kind of fund balance, how that will affect the fund balance of that particular set aside.
All right. Great. Thank you. And I just wanted a little bit more information. On Slide 15, we have the two fire inspectors. I just wanted a little bit more information with regards to what the fires inspectors will be in charge of. I heard multifamily housing, just wondering what they will be working on.
Thank you, Mayor. So it's called an R residential, and it's basically the state mandated by law inspections that have to be completed. And when we went to our new fee schedule, the fees that we're charging are basically just the straight costs for having those inspectors do the inspections and what it costs. And we were doing it with part-time, extra-help employees, but we are charging fees to do it with qualified, licensed, certified inspectors that don't need to be retrained like the part-time, extra-help do. And we only began collecting those fees in December, and so we were looking at the fees, and those should definitely cover the cost of moving what are two part-time, extra-help inspectors to two full-time based on the fees that we're going to charge. So the task is going to remain the same, but the fees that we're charging are going to pay for the employees that are full-time and qualified to do that, those state mandated inspections.
Wonderful. That's good news, always when we can turn a part-time, extra-help position into an actual full-time position with the city.
Absolutely.
And does this apply only to new buildings, or are these inspections that have to happen every so often?
It's, I believe, both. So it's the type of structure that needs to be inspected. If there's a new one, obviously, it has to be inspected. And then if it's an existing structure, it has to be inspected. And so, and those not, there are a lot of buildings that are not state mandated by law to be inspected. We'd love to, that's like the Cadillac side of things. But we are trying to meet desperately what's mandated by law, obviously, for the city and for the safety of the community. And so we are trying to meet 100% of that by having these, even the part-time, extra-help have not been around a long, long time, but our numbers have gotten a lot better since we brought those part-time, extra-help on. And then now, the plan was always, that's why we worked with the fee, with Terry Madsen, to get it where it would basically cover the cost of having two full-time employees do that. So it's new and existing.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
And those are all my questions. If there are no additional questions at the moment, I think we can take a short little break, and we'll be back for additional comments. All right. Thank you.[1013.63]